Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the December 4th, 2017 Salisbury City Council Work Session. I would ask that you all, any electronic devices you have, you please silence them. We have a couple of changes in the agenda, so let me point those out right now. The mayor was called away and is not here, so the historic tax credit support will not be on the agenda tonight. And also, we do not have the final document for the Salary Review Committee proposal, and that will be pulled tonight. So both of those items will appear on the next work session. We also, we're going to have another change, allowing the auditor who has to travel to go first. However, the auditor is not here, so that moves SU Public Policy class up for a presentation. So, wait a minute. Well, we have another change. Well, if you would just forgive me for doing that, but I'd like to invite Pamela Baker up to the desk, and Mr. Cordery, for the FY '17 audit. Good afternoon.
Last thing, send out for you.
Some light reading.
Page by page.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, boy.
This side. You got the thick one?
Yes.
Thank you. No. Should be a really thick one, a moderate thick one, and a real skinny.
Yep.
Oh, you've got your hands. Okay? Very good. So, what we're going to do, good afternoon, everybody. What we're going to do is kind of give you an overview of the summary results of the audit for the year ended June 30, 2017, and in anticipation of the final report and the final presentation being at the meeting next week, okay? I want to give you the highlights today. If you have any questions, you haven't seen this yet, so if there's anything that you would have a question about, something you expected to see as an outcome of the audit, please ask me, okay? And if I don't hit on it, we can get to it. You have, as I said, three items that we printed out or handed out to you. The really thick one is the overall financial audit. The thinner one is your single audit or your federal audit, and we'll touch on that one second. And then the last one is our communication to you in terms of any recommendations we had as a result of the audit, okay? So if we start with the really thick packet first, and I'm just going to direct you to a few of the pages throughout the report, I'm not going to go through every single page, but I do want to highlight for you overall the results of the audit. So I'm going to ask you to start on pages two, three, and four. Two, three, and four is actually the combination of what your independent audit is. So what pages two, three, and four say is that the financial statements which are included in that packet are the responsibility of management. Especially in your case, your management takes very seriously their responsibility to prepare the financial statements. Your accounting system is actually designed to generate the financial statements that you have here, okay? And I can tell you that we did not propose material adjustments as a result of our audit procedures, so to the extent that you've been provided any information during the course of the year, or anything financial, you should find consistency within these financial statements, okay? Were there any material changes to any of the numbers that you would have been functioning off of, whether it's a budget number or actual numbers? I would make that, make you aware of that. But we did not have any material adjustments. The other thing that this report says is now that there are the financial statements prepared by management, it's our responsibility as independent auditors to look at your internal controls and to evaluate those internal controls. Now, let me give you this one. Yep, absolutely. We animated to pages two, three, and four. So it's our responsibility to conduct our audit, to look at your internal controls, and to make sure that those financial statements that were prepared by management were done within a framework that means that they're fairly presented, okay? As a result of the audit procedures we applied, and let me just say that when we conduct an audit, we look at all of your major control cycles. So we're concerned that for any revenue streams coming into the city, that there's an appropriate check and balance, okay? That the same person doesn't have their hands on it from start to finish, into the bank account, into the books and records, and so that gives you some assurances of the numbers that are in these financials. The same thing happens on the expenditure side of the financial accounting, that there are checks and balances. The same thing we look at for payroll, which of course is very significant to the city. Payroll transactions, we look at, we test detailed transactions there. We also physically look at your inventory at the end of the year, and the physical inventory count of things that are not in use but are waiting to be put into use. We also look at the detail of your capital assets, your infrastructure. This year in particular, a lot of capital construction, a lot of capital projects ongoing. So we look at those processes from start to finish. Is there a new capital construction or a new capital projects? How was that handled from the setup of it? Was it bid properly? Did we enter into contracts with approval of council? Did we manage those contracts? What happened if there was a change order? Was the change order properly approved? Did we fund it properly? Did we spend in accordance with what the contract was? Were all of the steps, you know, anytime you have a construction project, there are, in addition to all the normal steps that you have, the checks and balances, you have to also manage those external contractors, that the work's being done, that the engineers, the architects, the people that are part of those contracts are looking at those on your behalf, to be sure that the work's being done correctly, and then that the payments are being made. Is there debt that's funding those payments? And in your case, there are debt issues and grant agreements that are tied to pieces of those construction projects. Do they match up? And so we look at all of those things when we're looking at the underline and the underpinning to these financial statements. Cash management, we also look at cash management from the perspective of, you know, are the cash balances? We confirm all balances of cash and investments with all third parties. We make sure that it's in the right place in your general ledger, in your account structure. For debt, we do the same thing. We confirm 100% of any debt that you have outstanding, and then we make sure it's in the correct place in terms of your financial structure. I know that's something that Keith and his team have been working very diligently on over the past two, three years, to really make sure we're tracking all of our debt proceeds to the right project and matching them. Same thing's happening with grants, grant administration. For those of you who have not been on council for a long period of time, I can go back to our early days of doing the audit when we weren't really matching real well. Grant funds coming in, spending it, and that has improved significantly now in terms of every grant dollar, we capture it and we spend against it. So as a result of all of that, on the top of page three, you have our opinion. That's the key paragraph in this whole document is from our perspective, because it tells you that in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented. So all the things I just explained to you, we concluded that your financial statements are fairly presented, that there are no material weaknesses identified in the underlying documents. So having said that, the next section of this document, which we're not going to go into, is the Management's Discussion and Analysis, which goes from pages five to 12. And this is where Keith, as management of the city, really gives just a real high-level summary of the financial information of the city one year compared to the next year, and focuses on some of the things. There's a section in here that talks about the major projects, you know, just in a summary, real high-level summary form. So I won't go into that section. The next section begins the financial statements. Pages 13 and 14 really demonstrate what the city would look like as though you were business, okay? All of your capital assets, the book value of them. It recognizes depreciation as a periodic cost of using, whether it's capital structures or whether it's infrastructure, right? And a government is different, you know, than a corporation in the fact that you have these things like roads and network systems, and so this recognizes your city as though it were business. And it puts it into two buckets: governmental activities, which is general fund, capital projects, everything focused when you think about police, public safety, all those things general. Business type represents water and sewer mostly. You've got some small other enterprise funds, but for the most part, that business-type activities are your water and sewer. And of course, as you know, this year, that business-type activities, if you look at the bottom of the second column, the net position, the sewer and water predominantly, the total net position grew to $68 million this year. You have a lot of projects going on, like you've got the whole waste water system. So that's all reflected in these numbers. The governmental activities, the other thing you might notice is under the net position here, you've got a deficit of $40 million that's unrestricted. As we spoke about in the prior two years, that's because of the pension. You know, you'll remember that the city now has to post their portion of the unfunded pension of the statewide pension system that you participate in. So it's not that you are not, you know, being responsible and have a deficit, it's that you're picking up an unfunded liability that exists at a higher level, but you are meeting all of your pension obligations. The pension liability this year is about $33 million, so that's significantly contributing to that $40 million. You also have other post-employment benefits of about $18 million liability. Those are the things that you promised to retirees in addition to their pension, certain health benefits that you've promised them. These are actuarially determined numbers of, you know, if everything stays the same, if people work to retirement, this is what you're going to have, okay? So it's about $18 million. All of that, the other side of that, makes your net position negative. That's why these statements really look at it as though we were a business, because you're not a business, right? You're a government. But this is the perspective that you can get. I'm not going to spend a lot of time with the rest of those statements. I kind of wanted to touch on some of the fund level, because I think that's probably what is a little more, you know, it's tangible, it's what you deal with on an ongoing basis. To do that, oh, let me just touch on one thing on page 58. I'm going to skip you around just a little bit, but I did want to point out, in just kind of concluding that discussion of the pension liability, your piece of the pool and why that liability grew. If you look on page 58, so you participated two plans, right? You've got page 58 and page 59, or excuse me, page 58, page 60. Page 58, this is going to become trend information for you. So the first year that we booked, your portion of the unfunded pension liability, if you look at the first, the column most to the right, the plan was 71.87% funded. Then it went to 68.78% funded. This last measurement date, it's down to 65.79% funded. So you can see from a trending perspective, that pension plan is not getting better. I would hope that with some of the market gains that have been recently, these valuations will start to change, because it's probably going to be what's going to most impact that favorable, favorable way. Likewise, for the page 60 is the other plan, and you've got similar numbers there, because I think they're all in the same pool. But suffice it to say that the pensions aren't going to continue to be an issue. Where it's going to affect the city is in your required contribution, because if these plans don't start to change and get in a better funding position, then your required contribution's going to go up to try to smooth that out. So that's where you're going to have to kind of watch that, okay? So now, let's look at page 62, if you would, because this is now going to look at the general fund. Okay, so the general fund for the year, budget versus actual. We're just going to look at the top level. There are other statements in here that give you more of a departmental focus, but in looking at your budget for the year, so your final budget, actually, let's just go to the total, page 63, your total budget for revenue, your final approved budget at the bottom of page 63, was 46, about $46.1 million. Your actual came in at about $46.3, so you were $202,000 close to budget, a little bit over budget for the year. It's about .8%. So revenue projections, you know, came in pretty well. There were some ups and downs, some were up a little, some were down a little, but for the most part, your revenue came in pretty close to on target. The next pages look at the expenditure side of the budget. On the expenditure side, the first thing you would do is as you look, starting on page 64, you will notice, and this is also pointed out by Keith in the MDNA, that every department was below budget. No department, no line item was over budget, okay? That was managed effectively during the year. You had an original budget. I think as time went on and you made decisions, especially as it related to capital, you know, Keith came in with a plan, showed you the plan, you modified the budget accordingly, which is what a budget's supposed to do, right? It's supposed to help you stay on track. What this did then is keep you on track. So you'll notice, as you go from page 64 through 65, that last column, you're looking for negatives. There are no negatives. Everybody was in under their final approved budget. 66, the same thing, 67, and then we get to the total on page 68. So look at the total expenditures line. So your final approved budget for total expenditures was $50.3 million. That budget, the significant change from the preliminary budget or the original budget of $38.5 to $50.3 was debt refunding, okay? So you modified your budget for that, and some capital items, as I mentioned earlier, went into your budget. You came in at $45.6 million, so you were under budget on expenditures by $4.7 million. Once again, a lot of that variance was really due to capital, which, as you know, with capital, you need to plan it, you need to put it in the budget, but it's not like salaries. You may not spend it this year, you may put those wheels in motion, that's going to carry to the next year and have to go back in because it just didn't come to total fruition, that spending, and so you had a favorable variance there. So, you know, from a perspective of being under budget, even if you took out, if you take out the capital that wasn't spent, I even backed out like the difference in the debt payments, because you had a refunding, so interest is down a little bit. Even if you back those things out, you still have a favorable variance of about 5%. So that was, you know, a good, good management of your general fund budget. So now, having said that, I'm going to bring you back to the front of the document, to page, let's touch on page 17, and then we'll look at the balances. So page 17 are the actual only. So the numbers we just looked at, that first column, that's the general fund. So the general fund in total decreased by $125,000, okay? So off of the $40 million budget, pretty good trending there. Your capital improvements fund, this is ongoing capital projects. This fund, you have it, you should always have an expectation that the balance will go up when you borrow to maintain or transfer funds in for capital, but that spins down because it's for dedicated capital. So you had capital outlays of about $4.7 million this year out of the capital improvements fund, so your fund balance decreased there, and then you've got some small, non-major funds. But now, let's look at what the ending balance is meant. So come forward to page 15. So on page 15, you have, and here, this is the general fund, and once again, if you're looking for sort of benchmarking, looking for results of operations, and where that puts you, look at your fund balance. Okay, so in the general fund, you've got the non-spendable, that's basically your inventory. You've already spent it, you just haven't used it yet. It's an asset, and it's a fund balance, but you've already spent the money. Committed, you've got committed resources for healthcare predominantly, that's the health reserve you have sitting, and then the assigned are open encumbrances. Okay, so you've committed, out of that fund balance, you've committed for things you've ordered but you haven't gotten them yet, so you haven't paid for them yet, so that $3 million has to come out, because you're going to spend that in this fiscal year, you're going to spend that $3 million. That leaves you with an unassigned fund balance of about $6.6 million. If you look at your total budget, that's about 9% or so average of a budget. It's about two months maybe of general operating expenditures. As your independent auditor, I, that's as low as I would go, okay? Just for perspective, when looking at sort of benchmarking. So, again, good management of fund balance, you definitely want to take in consideration things that we've already, we need to have that healthcare money set aside, and we need to have those encumbrances covered. So that's a good thing, okay? And part of that $3 million of encumbrances would be expenditures in July and August of this year, but still, you know, $6.6 million, I would say is an unassigned balance, is a, I wouldn't, I would try to stay there. I, you know, I might go much further than that. Let's touch, does anybody have any questions? I know I'm kind of taking you page to page, flying around, but turn around to, okay? So let's just touch then on water and sewer. So if you'll go to page 20, okay, so the big story with water and sewer this year, of course, is the ongoing capital projects and capital, the wastewater project. When you look at your water and sewer fund, that's the first column, you've generated about $14.9 million. Your operating expenses were about $11 million. Then you had depreciation. Now, in these funds, it's very important that we recognize depreciation as a cost of doing business. Not so much in the general fund, you know, whether I depreciate roads. When I need to pay a road, I'm going to have to pay the paper. In the water and sewer, though, you have to measure operations, because we have to set a user charge, and when you have the completion of that new project especially, you're going to have to set charges to recapture depreciation, because that means the system's being used up, and you can't wait till it's all used up to then say we need to, you know, repair it, or, you know, you have to have those services ongoing. So, take it into account depreciation, you had an operating income of $1.6 million this year, but then you had grant money coming in for $9 million. So from an operational standpoint, the 1.6 is where you would want to kind of look at, which means, you know, and you've got a new system coming in, so you really do need, while that's even going on, to be thinking about building up, you know, that, your equity, because you're going to need it to sustain that system for those things that go bad, that pump that goes bad, you know? So there's going to be ongoing maintenance on that. So your overall fund balance increased by $9.9 million, but a lot of that was because of the grants. So the grant money came in, but then it's on the balance sheet, because we capitalized it, okay? It's not like, it's not like the general fund where you bring it in and then you spend it and show it as a expense, it goes on the balance sheet. So that fund balance increased. The other small funds there are kind of sustaining themselves, which is what you wanted to do. But then if you just look at page 19 real quick, that's the balance sheet. So again, the water and sewer fund, focus again on that net position, first column, most of what that fund has is capital assets. So if you take all the capital assets minus the debt you have incurred, you've got about $44 million invested in capital items, okay? Capital items can sustain the system, but they can't pay the bills, right? So the restricted funds of $21 million are there, because you have on, you have cash and investments on hand, but they're going into the system, we just haven't finished it yet. And then you do have a small deficit unrestricted of $125,000. It's not uncommon, when you have major projects going on, that until the project is completed, at some point, I'm sure, you know, Keith will be looking at doing, you know, sort of a rate revaluation, and then you'll have to look at rates to sustain you going forward. Any question on those funds?
It's going to be interesting budget.
Okay, so those are the, let me just, in terms of those construction projects, to give you a sense, there is, on page 54 and 55, because I'm throwing around big numbers, but on page 54 and 55, we do kind of give a sense of where all of the projects stand. So when you look at the bottom of page 54, these are all the governmental CIP projects, okay? Police, communication, skate park, all of those things, okay? So the project amount, you've committed to $16.7 million in terms of contracts, okay? To date, or through June 30 of 2017, you've spent a little over $10 million, so you've got $6.7 million left, okay? And some of that, you have outstanding bonds that you just haven't drawn the money down from, some of that's capital improvements, so that's what you have left to cover, to finish those. At the top of the next page are the water and sewer predominantly, those projects, the wastewater treatment plant and some other small. Once again, you've got $76 million in commitments, you've spent $53.2 to date, and you've got about $22.8 million to go. Remember when we were just looking at the water and sewer, there was that big restricted, that most of that is going to be used, okay, to complete those projects? Okay, those are, believe it or not, of this whole, what, 88-page document, those are the highlights. I do want to touch just for a minute on the two other documents you have. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm sure if I go through them, I will.
Right. Well, that's a good time to say, I mean, in between now and next Monday, really, if you have questions, funnel them to Keith, if there's something we need to respond to, he can kind of let us know, and we can be sure that we do that for you.
On pages 58 and 60, and it's the employee plan, and as opposed to the LEAP's plan, which is law enforcement fire. Just as, should I go play the numbers? 14, 15, and 16, both of those two funds come up at the exact same percentage. Is that normal? Is that what you wanted, or should I go play the numbers, 7, 1, 8, 7?
Well, I think it's all within the same, it's the statewide plan, but you have it broken down in two pieces. So they probably follow the same investment strategy, the one I'm guessing, I don't know.
It'd be amazing to have, now, the percentages are a little different.
Right.
But the, I was just wondering. And then my question is really, I guess, for Keith, for next week, when we talk about it again, with the changes that we made in the long, perilous conversation we had about retirement and charges and what we were going to cover, and it used to be 100%, now it's a much lower rate, yet this percentage goes down.
This is the pension, and we were discussing the OED, so this, that was the healthcare for retirees. This is the pension plan.
Okay.
And one distinction, too, that's also important to realize, the state of Maryland and their correspondence to us has represented that they will not be adjusting our rates in order to make up this unfunded amount. It's all on them. So that's the representation to us at this time.
On the healthcare or pension?
On the pension.
So where are the numbers for the healthcare, so that we could see, is it 52?
Yeah.
Did we get, did we do any better with the changes that we made?
That's quite. That's what I'm not going to show yet, because your last valuation for that-
That's in this year's budget. We discussed this, what, last March, I think is when we discussed OPEB.
Yeah, your last valuation for OPEB at the bottom of the page was seven one twenty sixteen. It's always a year behind. So yeah, you probably, actually, you might not see those changes until next year. Yeah, so the one, the July one seventeen valuation is probably still going to continue to tick up. And then if you change benefits, you'll see that change after that. Briefly, on the short packet, the single audit package, I'm going to, I'm going to give you the summary in a real quick way. You look at page nine of that document. Page nine gives you a summary of the entire audit, including the single audit. And this is because you spent federal funds in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's your, the grant programs that you have, the loan programs you have for the wastewater treatment plan. You actually spent thirteen point seven million this year of federal funds. You have loan balances with the federal government outstanding of twenty-seven point six million, just to put it in context for you. But on page nine, this walks you through the results of the audit, this is what the federal government gets. And it says basically, on the first line, the auditors' report that was issued, that's what we went over, the very first report we went over, that was an unmodified or a clean opinion. We had no material weaknesses identified. This is over your financial statement control. No significant deficiencies and no non-compliance with anything related to financial reporting. For your federal programs, we tested that wastewater treatment program because it's the biggest expenditure that you have. We have to test it for financial controls and compliance controls, okay? A lot of those compliance controls go to, you know, are you using contractors that are not suspended or disbarred and things of that nature? No material weaknesses there, no significant deficiencies. You had an unmodified or clean opinion of compliance. You did not qualify as a low risk auditee, but that really serves because of the nature of those programs and some of those loan programs. The federal government's very sensitive to make us test those every year or so. But it's the biggest program you have, we wouldn't have any others to test if you didn't have that one. So, good single audit results. Lastly, that real short, two pager that you have is our letter of recommendation. For those of you who were part of this process last year, you'll recall that we had a recommendation about four my nines not being current. And up to date, we retested that this year. We took a random selection and tested, have no exceptions. So even with some of the turnover that's been downstairs in Keith's department, and a lot of hats having to change, and a lot of people having to step in and come up to speed, he did very well on that. The only other thing, you know, we talked last year about GASB seventy-five, which is the OPEB. So next year, you just have to book all remaining liability. Right now, you've got about seventeen million booked, you have to bring it up to that twenty-eight million and pull it all onto the balance sheet, just like you did with the pensions. And that's just kind of given you an FYI, you have to do that. There really shouldn't be, in the near term, any other GASB statements, accounting standards to impact you. The next one you're going to have will be relating to any operating leases that you have. If you have operating leases, you're going to have to start treating them like capital leases, where you capture the asset and the liability. There'll be a wash on your statements, but it will be some additional work, Keith, and for us to look at as well. And then a little bit further out, just for those of you who are just fascinated by these statements, like Keith and I are, a little bit further out, just so you know, the GASB is undergoing a process right now of relooking at this whole format. The MDNA, should we have two bases of accounting, should we? It's pretty fascinating, I've actually had an opportunity to testify to some of their thought processes to the GASB board, and it's pretty interesting. But that'll be a while coming, that'll probably be five or six years before really any significant changes. But just so you know, if you hear anything about it, you know, as public officials, you may get, you know, from different organizations that you belong to, just so you're aware, if you see anything coming through, that's what they're talking about. They're really trying to relook at, what are we communicating financially as a government, and what should we be communicating? And have we really gotten the message across? This format came into place in two thousand nine, so it's been a long time since it's been looked at, and so they're kind of looking at it again. So to the point that, about the pensions and putting that liability on the books, here's the chance where maybe we'll get some discussion about that as well. So, with that, any questions further?
I think we're all on the same boat.
No, that's a lot-
We're going to have to-
A lot to digest, okay, okay. Well, feel free, as I said, reach out to Keith, he knows how to get in touch with us. If there's anything that, you know, looks like a disconnect and barring anything huge, we'll see you next week with the final.
I think also, one thing that's commendable is, you know, when, you know, in the past couple of years, when you find something that, you know, we're rectifying, and that's a credit to Keith and-
Absolutely.
The department heads in making those improvements, so very appreciative of that.
Keith is a great auditee because he looks at something and he keeps us in the back of his- So when something's happening during the year, that's when he comes in and says, you know, hey, can you weigh in on this? You know, and he'll reach out to Tim in our office, or to myself, and say, weigh in on this from a government standard, from an internal control standard, and let's make sure that we, you know, are going to all get to the same place when you get here. So, thank you for that comment, and Keith really does deserve a lot of credit for doing that, not everybody does that.
Yeah, it's nice to see a clean, clean sheet. Thank you.
This year, we had the public sale that was interesting to account for.
Yeah.
No pain visible here, but there was some pain in processing that.
Generally, there is.
There's always pain, we just try to make a look at what we get.
Thank you, Pamela, appreciate it very much.
Thank you, thanks for letting me go first on your agenda as well, I appreciate it.
Okay, SU, public policy class. I don't know how you want to-
Is it possible to speak from the podium?
Sure, absolutely. Is somebody going to drive this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, as you hear about the budget, we'll recommend all sorts of things.
As long as it doesn't cost us any money, we're fine.
Well, they're, they took constant account, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you all for allowing my class to come present their civic engagement projects tonight. They'll be walking you through the work that they've been doing over the course of the semester, and then they'll be happy to field questions afterwards, and then most of them have work and class and things to get to. Although I'm sure they found the budget presentation quite interesting, being that we've been talking about public administration all semester. So, thank you.
Good evening, city council members. We are students from Salisbury University's Department of Political Science, here to share with you tonight the results of our semester-long civic engagement project. In our political science four forty course on public administration with Dr. Sarah Surak, we spent the semester focusing on the characteristics of modern American governmental bureaucracies and the important issues public administrators face today, including municipal waste management. In doing so, we have researched the city's current recycling initiatives and drafted policy briefings around a number of topics. In completing our projects, we've worked closely with members of the city's administration, the Public Works Department, the Sustainability Advisory Committee, local businesses, and the public. We would like to give a special thank you to Julia Glanz, Henrik Wise, Jennifer Alberro, Casey Martin, and the members of our, of the Salisbury Sustainability Advisory Committee for their contributions to our efforts. Tonight, three groups will present our results. Our group will begin with a plan to increase public relations efforts. We will then hear from the Business Recycling and Zero Waste Folk Festival groups.
Good evening, city council. I'm Eleanor Brown, working with Gabrielle Mals and Evan Trayworgy. All three of us are coming to Salisbury University from the other side of the bridge. So we knew that in order to present effective and efficient proposals to you, the city council, we needed to speak with city residents to better understand the public's perception of the city's recycling opportunities. In doing so, residents expressed the need for increased awareness of what the city can and cannot accept for recycling, as well as the need for access to recycling opportunities in the city's public parks. With less than ten percent of city residents currently utilizing the curbside recycling program, greater awareness of the program, as well as what can be recycled, is needed. This can be achieved through stickers and magnets as marketing resources to promote the city's recycling initiative. Working with Ms. Casey Martin, City of Salisbury Sustainability Advisory Committee member, we created, well, she created, a sticker and magnet logo design with the downtown Salisbury colors and slogan, Recycle Right, visible on a white background, as, right here on the screen. Stickers can be put on recycling bins, while corresponding magnets can be placed on refrigerators or wherever an individual feels comfortable placing them. They also include a web address for updated recycling information, solsbury dot M D slash recycle right. Here are the pricing quotes for each company contacted and the total estimated costs for printing approximately a thousand stickers and magnets. It is suggested that stickers and magnets produced by Red Sun Custom Apparel, cheapest option of the three, be used as a primary option to make residents aware of how to recycle in the city of Salisbury. By using stickers and magnets to promote recycling, the cost of trash collection will decrease, while the opportunity for city residents to recycle will increase. As the stickers and magnets are distributed, the next step will be to move towards a recycling bin with a new recycling logo placed front and center and the website domain directly underneath the logo. The graphic indicates the current city website, but we propose the use of a standard recycle right URL. The bin and website will point city residents in the right direction if they have questions about recycling. Currently, the recycling bins only portray the city logo. City residents do not always know what goes into the bins or how to recycle different materials, such as paper and glass products. By including the web address, citizens will be more informed of what can be recycled and easily provided with a contact number for the Department of Field Operations. This is extremely important, as many city residents are new to recycling or have recently moved to the city, who are the current residents receiving new recycling bins. Custom curbside recycling bins would cost the city, depending on the size, between ten to fifteen dollars per bin. When speaking with city residents, many expressed their frustration with not having access to recycling in the city's public parks. These residents described the ethical dilemma of deciding whether to dispose of their recyclable items into the trash cans or take the recyclable items back to their household recycling bins. The latter is a frustrating response when a simple solution is possible, installing recycling bins in the city's public parks. Though installing recycling bins in city public parks can be expensive, on average, recycling bins for outdoor spaces can range from three hundred dollars to a thousand five hundred dollars, based upon the size and sturdiness of the bin. These are examples from other cities that highlight innovative ways to offset the cost for new bin installation through advertisement sales or bin grants. By building upon the initiatives of Colorado Spring and Oak Park, the city of Salisbury may decrease municipal waste management costs and an increase in recycling participation among city residents by providing recycling opportunities in city public parks. With thirteen public city parks in Salisbury, a trial period of placing recycling bins alongside trash cans in Salisbury City Park, the largest park with the greatest public traffic, would serve as a strong measure of possible success. If successful, additional bins could be placed in each city public park with the goal of pairing recycling bins with trash cans. With these three proposals in mind, we hope that you, the city council, will consider our proposals, and we welcome questions at the end of our classmates' presentations. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lillian Walters, Nicole Stafford, William Darden, and I, Terry Gladys, are proposing a policy to address business recycling. Currently, there is no official action taken by the city to address business recycling. We are proposing a policy comprised of three elements. A mandate which will require businesses to recycle, a sticker that businesses will receive to display as they comply with the mandate, and a webpage on the city's website with resources and guidelines for businesses on how to more efficiently recycle. The mandate requires businesses to comply with at least one of the following options. Recycle twenty percent of the business's generated waste, recycle two different types of recyclable materials, or provide options for consumer recycling, offerers recycling bins in the front of the establishment. Enforcement policy will be left to the city's discretion. However, through our research, we recommend an enforcement policy that involves the following. If the business fails to comply with one of the requirements by a predetermined deadline, the city will warn the business that they need to comply, and then fine the business after continued non-compliance. The fine will increase until the business complies. The fine should be as severe as the city sees fit. Please note that in our original plan, was to create a voluntary program in which good publicity provided by the sticker and on the website would serve as motivation for the businesses to recycle. After presenting our proposals to the city's Sustainability Advisory Committee, we added the mandatory compliance component to this proposal. They recommended it due to their experience with the issue, that making recycling mandatory would be the best route to take. The next component is the sticker. The sticker would act as an incentive to participate in the program. This complimentary sticker would be provided to the businesses upon compliance. The sticker is pictured on this slide, mimicking the recycle right sticker, but it reads recycling business. This design was also created by Ms. Casey Martin. The business will notify the city of compliance in order to receive their complimentary sticker, and the sticker can be displayed if the business chooses. The sticker creates good publicity, as the business can show their customers that they are working towards being a greener business. I will now turn it over to my colleague, William Darden, for the final component of our proposal.
The webpage can be added to the city's recently renovated homepage for the city government. The addition itself will be relatively easy to implement and should not take more than a single workday. Once the website is running, maintenance should be relatively minimal, with the site being nearly autonomous. You can see some potential mockups on the slide above. The website is mainly meant to serve as a resource of information for businesses to see how they can more effectively recycle. Throughout the course of this project, my partners and I had several engaging conversations with businesses around Salisbury on how everyone can step up their efforts to become greener. Many businesses recycle effectively, or at least put the effort forward, but still, many fail to create an effective system because of a lack of education and communication. This website will help small, growing businesses in Salisbury put their best foot forward in their recycling efforts. Counties such as Prince George's, Anna Rundle, Howard, Montgomery, and more all have resources such as this one that businesses can reference and use. Even without a mandate, this is the least amount of effort the city should put in to help push the importance of business recycling. As the city grows and small businesses continue to flourish, we hope that the issue of communication and recycling will be addressed. I will now turn it over to the final group, who are focusing on zero waste at the National Folk Festival.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Massey, and I'm here with my group members, Abigail Mulhern and Jacob Bitter. So, our group has been working to make, for a plan, to make the National Folk Festival, which is hosted by the city of Salisbury next year, September seventh through ninth, two thousand eighteen, a zero-waste event. Mayor Jake Date recently announced that the National Folk Festival would be a zero-waste event. Typically, these events divert at least eighty percent of the event's non-hazardous waste from landfills. To accomplish this goal, this proposal outlines a three-step zero-waste proposal for the festival's green committee. First, waste stations located throughout the event site will pair with trash containers, recycling, and compost bins, providing green disposal options for attendees. Second, the Folk Festival's green committee will- Second, the Folk Festival's Green Committee will work with food vendors prior to the event to assure that material distributed may be easily composted or recycled. Third, a team of zero-waste volunteers will remove contamination from recyclable and compostable waste streams. This proposal describes an in-house process for the thoughtful and waste reduction of materials at the Folk Festival. There are economic, environmental, and social benefits to a zero-waste event, including lowering the cost by reducing garbage expenses, diverting recyclable and compostable materials from entering the landfill, and reducing methane generation. A zero-waste National Folk Festival will increase the public's awareness of recycling, composting, and waste diversion, while promoting a positive image of sustainability for our city. Waste reduction will also save the city money by reducing the cost of trash sent to the landfill. Hosting a zero-waste event conveys leadership in waste reduction and has the ability to protect community health. Event waste stations will provide garbage, recycling, and composting options for participants. Pairing all three bins assures that attendees will easily have access to all waste disposal options, from recycling plastic bottles to composting food waste. The waste stations will be placed no more than 150 feet apart to ensure adequate coverage. And all bins will be clearly labeled with words and pictures, as well as staffed with volunteers. Recyclable materials and garbage will be transported to the Wycomico landfill utilizing already-existing city contracts. Disposing of compostable materials will require a separate, one-time contract. Education is a key component to any successful zero-waste event, as many attendees, volunteers, and vendors will not be familiar with zero-waste. It is important to provide clear and easily accessible information. Tables with program information will be located in easily visible spots. Community volunteers will assure program success by staffing waste stations to assist all attendees in disposal decision-making. Volunteers will also sort collected material, removing contamination. A minimum of 50 volunteers from local groups such as Salisbury University's Honors College will be necessary to run the program successfully for three days. While zero-waste events reduce garbage disposal costs, they also create additional financial needs, such as additional signage, funding for the compost disposal, and T-shirts for volunteers. Securing a corporate sponsor is one way to offset these costs, and I will now turn this over to my colleague, Abby, who will discuss the final component of our group's proposal.
The final component of our group is a proposed reusable beverage cup for the National Folk Festival. The reusable beverage cup is a souvenir cup which patrons purchase and then reuse throughout the festival. This will create less waste by diverting a significant amount of waste from entering the landfill. Patrons will be able to take home the cup as memorabilia from the National Folk Festival, and they can also recycle the cup if they choose not to do so. The design of the cup will be a stadium-style 32-ounce cup, which incorporates the logo of the city of Salisbury and references zero-waste, as well as the National Folk Festival. The cup will also feature advertisement logos from the vendors at the festival. Patrons will buy the cup at vendors booths at the Folk Festival, and then when the patron purchases the cup, the first purchase will result in a free fill from the vendor. This free fill will consist of either beer or a fountain drink. All refills of the cup will cost a normal amount, decided by the vendor. The program benefits vendors, patrons of the event, and the city of Salisbury. The Folk Festival's Green Committee must communicate incentives to vendors for participating in the cup program. Vendors will benefit with free advertising by having their logo advertised on the cup, and patrons will benefit by having a souvenir to take home that is also discounted for them. Benefits for the city include good public relations, showing how Salisbury is a green city, and promotes the Folk Festival as a memorable event that is part of Salisbury. There are waste diversion benefits to this program as well, such as less probability for improper disposal into the landfill, a lower amount of recycling, and a reusable cup that's taken home, which diverts the waste from the festival. The profit from the cups can be used to offset the cost of the other zero-waste components. The city of Salisbury will initially purchase the cups. Dynamic Drinkware is one company which creates custom-style cups for events such as the National Folk Festival. An order of a 32-ounce cup with flat graphics will require a minimum purchase of 5,000 cups. If 5,000 cups are sold, the cost per cup will be 87 cents, or $4,350. Ordering 10,000 cups provides a price break, which each cup will only cost 70 cents, for a total of $7,000. Patrons will purchase these cups for $5 each. If all 5,000 cups are sold, the city will generate $20,650 in revenue. The money earned from the cup sales will be used to cover the cost of waste diversion and waste management from the Folk Festival. The proposal of the reusable beverage cup will benefit the city, showing good public relations, and will help achieve the mandate of zero-waste set by Mayor Jake Day at the National Folk Festival. Thank you very much for taking your time to listen to all of our presentations. We look forward to any questions you may have for each group, and if you'd like more information, here's the website, which features all of our policy briefs.
Thank you very much. That's amazing. Very well put together, because you've paid attention to the attention span of politicians.
Well, I perked back up when we had a 32-ounce beer cup.
Questions?
No.
I just have one comment, and maybe a suggestion. I think it would have been pretty cool if you could have got with a business class from the business side of it, and worked together to talk about a practical piece of this, which is return on investment from a "make sure we can pay for this" type of thing. You've sort of covered it, based on some of the analysis that were mentioned during the program, but I think it would enhance the presentation if you also presented a business plan at the same time. So, just a recommendation, but certainly a lot of work there. The other comment that I have is the zero-waste plan for the Folk Festival is a focused, three-day event, which is significantly different than an ongoing 365-day-a-year battle, which is what it's going to end up being with some people. So, I think that the first point of attack would be to get our arms around what the Folk Festival is going to cost us completely, and we'll look at that, and I'm sure the mayor's going to be working on that and present us with some proposals. The other one's got a little more tricky, not just for the fact that things change, but the county currently doesn't accept a lot of recyclable... People look at, in my neighborhood, all the time, they're stopping me going, "Why do they leave the thing in the blue container?" Well, because the clamshell, which is one of the ones that they will not take anymore, and it's an economic thing. So, another example, I know, I actually have a place in New Hampshire that doesn't recycle glass anymore. Because of the, yeah, the... It's a small town, and it costs too much to take care of it.
That's pretty common, actually, municipalities. Our county, it just sits in a pile right now. It's not being recycled at all.
So, it's a tough road, but I think certainly the work is greatly appreciated. I commend you on your class on that. I hope you enjoyed it, because if you don't have fun doing it, I've been in a couple classes like that, it does not much fun, so thank you again. We appreciate it very much.
Yeah, now, I'd add a comment, too, when you're doing something like this, especially with the business piece of it, is to get with a few businesses. So, if you get with a lot of large realtors, like Walmart, Best Buy, Target, a lot of those have recycling programs. I worked for Walmart, and about 10 years ago, their waste program turned into a profitable venture in the company because of recycling plastic and cardboard, and that stuff is viewed as a commodity. So, a lot of them do have that. Some of the smaller ones, I'm not sure about, but those are ones that you can help educate, too, so.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, next on the agenda, Andy, you're going to talk about the nonprofit parking permits.
Yes, at our last work session, I brought it up, and brought it back for further discussion. Couple of things I did want to highlight from our last conversation. It was asked about some of our numbers for our permits. Just give everybody a quick total that I have. For the nonprofit permits, we're looking at 89 permits, and 56 of those are Wycomico County Library, which is 63%. And then also, we talked about the government permits, and overall, there's 304 government permits that are paid, and 256 of those are Wycomico County employees. The majority of the remaining 48 go to the state's attorney's office. Now, there's one point of clarification. In the proposal that you have, that is the $12,811 reduction, that includes all government entities, including state and federal, that is here, not just Wycomico County. So, if you were just looking at just Wycomico County employees receiving the reduction, that changes by about $1,700. And I have those sheets if people want that information. So, the way it's written right now, it's all government, all 304 paid permits receive it, rather than just Wycomico County. So, that would just be a small tweak, depending if you want all government or just local county government. And again, I have handouts if people want to see those numbers. Otherwise, again, it would start in January, with the January parking permits is when this would go into effect, go through the end of June, and then we'd go back to the new rate schedule, which will be included in the budget. And then this reprieve for just the county government is just through the end of June. But the rate, the 25% reduction for nonprofits would continue on with the new rates.
Questions?
May I have a handoff?
Yep. So, what else mentioned, Hardy, is on the red, you'll see the change in price on the right side. And just for a reference, we have 1,163 permits that we issue on average each month. So, government's about 26% is the total, and the nonprofits is less than that, at about 8%.
Do you see how many permits bases we have total?
I'd have to double-check. I think it's between 1,500 and 1,600 when you count all the parking lots, and that, depending on some new construction and some potential business lots, some of that would be adjusting if we...
Yeah, that's close enough. Thank you.
In the parking garage, we have 546 issued permits.
And my understanding is that that's pretty much totally full now.
It's pretty full. Bill, do you have any, know much about that?
I think our last check was at 82%, so it's not completely full. But that's a adjusted number, based upon, we have hourly rates as well, so we don't want it completely full.
Right, okay.
And this doesn't account for, with Delmarven now, Daily Times moving downtown, there's a few more parking permits that will be added now that they're established, so I think that number goes up, 30 or 40.
Any other questions or comments? Consensus to move it forward?
What are we moving forward? Are we saying that we're going to give all 400?
We're going to lose, well, if everybody...
Which written right now would be all, would be government, it'd be the full.
And so the Wycomico, I might be conflating my issues...
The state's attorney's office as well, because their budget, they budget the same as well.
The way it's actually, so there's two proposals. The financial statement that you have originally in the memo was including all government. The way it's written right now is only Wycomico County. So, there's a decision, if you want it to be Wycomico County only, or if you want it to be all government entities down downtown.
I think it would, since the state's attorney's office budgets the same way, I think it would be fair to do all government.
Yeah, I do, too.
I thought we were just giving the county a break on the fact that they didn't budget for these for the rest of the year.
Yeah, that's the concern I'm having. Are we talking about a permit difference here? Am I conflating...
No, it's going back to the same...
The moratorium is later on the agenda.
Yeah, clarification, it is, they didn't, the county didn't budget for the increase. We did not receive any conversation from the other state agencies. No one did reach out to us, but they would fall into that same pot, potentially, if you're looking at government as a whole.
If the other state agencies didn't reach out to us, why would we offer them a moratorium? Becomes my response to that.
Well, we didn't, everybody's budget was being done at the same time, so they were not aware that we were increasing a fee that they were paying us when it went into effect.
So, how good a neighbor do we want to be?
The county had already done the budget, county, the state's attorney's office had already done their budget, so.
Yeah, but they also didn't call and ask, which is something if Barbara Thule Thornton was sitting there talking to them, they'd go, "That's a material weakness. You don't go upstairs to see if there's a price change."
Well, maybe it's, this is something even before the budget process, if we have a discussion when we increase a fee like that, do we communicate to them that, hey, maybe next year, we might be increasing it, so you may want to add an increase into your budget.
Are we conflating the issues, the nonprofit parking permit rates and the moratorium on the permit fees? Are we having this conversation at the same time, should we have it in discreet fashion as set out in the agenda? Because the nonprofit parking permits could seem a bit hazy, because now we're looking at some 400 spots, where if we're only talking about nonprofits, we're talking about 89 slots.
Well, if we were going to freeze or whatever, reduce whatever, wouldn't we have contacted them to let them know?
We did it once we adopted the budget, which they had already adopted their budget.
Yeah, before we did this.
I mean, they're our customers.
There's two separate, the question, there's two separate things. I think we need to handle the nonprofit segment first, see if we have consensus on the nonprofit, and then talk about the additional, follow what I'm saying? Instead of combining both into one discussion.
One discussion or one ordinance? I just want to make sure we're clear.
Well, I think it's going to require two ordinances.
Okay.
I mean, Mark, am I right?
I mean, it's written as one now, but if we want to...
It's currently drafted as one ordinance, because it's, we basically have a fee schedule beginning in January, and one of them is a temporary waiver, and the other is a permanent waiver from the fee schedule. And they were just, at the last work session, they were combined, but we tweaked them more recently, just to make sure that the two didn't, the two ordinances didn't step on each other, basically. Everybody should be looking at the fee schedule that's attached to the other ordinance. That's what the discounts would come from, that fee schedule.
And again, as Jim, nonprofit would be moving forward, government would be just the next six months.
Okay.
As long as it's stipulated that way, I think, and we can do it in one, as long as it is that way.
It is that way in the ordinance.
Is the, is that?
Five more organizations in the state's attorney come to us and ask for the same thing, or do you just decide to be able to put them in there?
The way we break it down, we listed as government as a total. I just want to give it the numbers. It depends if we, how we want to break it out, but that's why I split it out.
So, the state's attorney's office didn't prepare for the change either?
I can't imagine that they prepared for a change if they didn't know.
I was not notified on that. I'm not, I don't want to speak for the mayor or Julia.
It's a customer service thing. We raised our price, but we didn't inform our customers in a timely manner.
I think in the future, anytime we put a...
But these are compelled customers. These are compelled customers. These aren't customers that have the choice to move elsewhere. So, there's a distinction to be made. I see, they have to be here. This is where they're all...
If we were to put them on sale and they didn't take it, would you say we, I mean, that's basically what we're doing.
Well, I think it's a courtesy, for sure, at the very least. Anytime we consider in our budget, a change in something that's going to affect another organization, they should be notified prior to us in approving the budget.
What are we doing?
Well, then, let me ask you this question. Should every person who has a parking permit be sent a letter to tell them we're going to discuss parking fees?
You could put it on the website.
Could you do that for this?
So, the question is, is everybody gets notified to some sort of general public avenue? Did you budget for it during the, the question is, is when we decided to make the change, if they had already decided about the budget? And that's the question. It's, I think the notification's out there, was it too late or early enough for the changes?
Yeah.
There will be other additional incremental steps as this continues on with parking, so we will make sure that that goes out during the FY19 cycle. We just need to make this, the decision really comes down to part of the government or all the government. Is that kind of what we're deciding right now?
If we do it for one, we have to do it for all. I mean, that's the, for all the governments.
Why?
Okay, but that isn't what we discussed last week. Last week, Wycomico County came to us and said that they had not...
Budgeted.
Yeah.
Had not budgeted.
But in that budget is also, the state's attorney's office is in that budget.
But what formal...
Even though they do their own budget, it's still a part of the county budget and approved by the county. I mean, I consider that county government.
What formal notification did we give them, though?
Yeah, we have watered sewer people who know the budget comes around, and they know... Yeah, we have water and sewer people who know the budget comes around, and they know that these things are going on. And Wycomico County is a governmental agency that does their budgets the same way we do. I think the way I explained it last week was, so I'm supposed to take the eleven-thousand-dollar hit because they didn't do what they were supposed to do?
Well, no, I don't, that's not that.
Because they didn't know that they had to do that. Yeah, they didn't know. And then just like somebody sending me a bill and giving me an increase and not giving me dollars off.
This is, nobody gets told that anymore. It's just, this is, as their budget people went and did their budgets, and they got to that line, and I said it last week, A-dash-one-two-seven and six zeros after that, and it's under parking, how come nobody at that, in that entity said, "Do we know if parking rates are going up?" I'm just, I don't know, I'm just saying the exact same thing I did last week.
You have a point there, but why did we not notify them?
If I, if I was running that, I would ask the question.
You would've.
I agree. I would have asked the question, have we heard about any increases? This, my thing would be a general statement. Have we heard about any increases that we haven't addressed in the budget? That's a general, that's what you do in business. But having said that...
They didn't.
Because of the fact that they didn't, we didn't tell them, and if I was running a business, I will tell you, that I would go, if I was going to raise prices...
I'll let you know.
I would call each of my customers or put a notice out that they are going to get, they're going to see a price increase.
Well, in this situation, when it's preparing a budget, we would say there's a potential for an increase in the parking permit, because it may come to budget time, and it doesn't get increased.
And we, right.
I mean, that's, so that's, I mean, the issue is, is that they're trying to do their budget, and it may or may not be increased. We're going to do ours, we may or may not increase it, so there needs to be some level of communication there, so, because we're both doing our budgets at the same time. So they don't know the intricate details of the ten thousand, fifteen thousand lines of our budget, just as we don't know the intricate details of their lines on their budget, so...
Have we been in this predicament before?
Never.
No.
Never? So we've never increased...
Not since I've been on the campus.
Yeah, this is what I'm thinking. We've never, because we could also place ourselves in a predicament where whenever we increase fees here, other governmental bodies say, "Oh, well, you didn't notify us in a timely fashion," so create a moratorium for...
Each one is, each one is an individual case.
And to be perfectly clear, the amount of millions of dollars that they have in surplus, the idea that eleven, is this, is this tied to something else? Is this tied to the other things going on? Are we going to make sure that we help that?
Honestly, honestly, I think it's as simple as, is it the right thing for us to do?
Well, I...
I don't disagree with that, but I...
So we're talking about eleven thousand dollars, is it the right thing to do? That's the way we should look at it.
Professional.
Yes.
Professional, by the way.
Yeah, that's how I look at it.
I mean, if you want, if you want them to be professional when it comes to us, then we have to be professional when it comes to us.
So it is linked to something else?
Do we have consensus to...
Well, what are we, what are we getting consensus on?
We're getting consensus for the nonprofit.
The nonprofit.
And we're giving consensus to all the government agencies, as is stated on here. Correct?
For the last six months of the fiscal year, and then it goes back to regular.
Correct. Correct.
So July first, it goes up?
Right.
July first, they pay the...
What they're supposed to.
What they're supposed to.
What they're supposed to. Yep.
I don't know if the consideration matters, but ish for the state's attorney's office, it would be fourteen-hundred dollars a year difference.
Okay, we've got two, three, four. Jim? Yeah, whatever. Okay. We have consensus. We have, well, because you're, this is what you did.
Behave yourself.
Jim, somebody says at the table.
Jim, this is what you did. You went like this.
All nonprofits and all...
I'll be more clear next time.
Okay. What would you, would you like to go on record as being opposed or against?
Please move this forward.
Okay.
Behave yourself.
We have consensus, so we'll move that forward. Next on the agenda is pay station parking fee rate adjustment. We have some new information, I believe. Bill?
Yes.
Come on up.
I'm here representing Mr. Stevenson. The proposal was, the first two hours would be at the standard rate. Hour two through three would increase nominally, and then hour three through four, it would increase as well. At that point, a discussion was made was, are they able to pay for less than an hour? And you are if you pay with coins. So you can use the Parkion meter for less than an hour, as you mentioned earlier, Councilman, if you're using coins. Parkion doesn't recommend using, using your credit card or your phone app due to the cost for less than an hour, so.
But they can do it.
They can do it.
Which is good. That addresses the point of somebody that's just dropping something off and picking something up, and they can pay by coin.
Correct.
Okay.
Another question was discussed was, if I'm at a restaurant and I want to add extra additional time to my meter, what you will be able to do with the phone app? Is there a cost in association with your initial cost? And the answer is yes.
So there's an administrative fee every time you change what you originally had?
Transaction fee.
Which then takes care of the customer who, because we were concerned about getting an administrative fee on fifty cents, but if you can only use coins, it doesn't matter. Correct?
So with the coins, there would be no administrative?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's why they're saying coins for less than an hour.
Yes, that is correct. Less than a, which is a dollar.
So there'd be a tip or hit with a convenience fee for using...
Their phone app or a credit card.
What's the, what was the percentage on that, or do we have a, do we get a number on that?
I don't think we have it.
Okay, I was just curious.
I'm sorry, I can't, I don't have it in front of me.
What was the question?
What is the exact cost for administrative fee using the...
The convenience fee, basically.
That was like thirty-five cents, but we can look at that.
Thirty-five cents per transaction?
I think, but let me, let me look at that.
That's why you can't do what I'm doing.
Under fifty cents, it would almost cost you twice to do it by credit.
That's using the app, not the credit card, I just wanted to make sure that's...
Well, it sounds like we can accomplish what we want to accomplish without any, impacting any additional fees for us, so, good.
And the coin thing will be available on the one on the street?
At the machine, yes. Yes. We had a citizen call saying, "I don't have a credit card, and I don't have a smartphone. How can I use the apparatus?" And hence the coin is available.
Okay. Consensus to move it forward?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, let's go. Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Tell Tom I hope he feels better. Jim, you asked for a copy of the moratorium permit fee waivers, and we've gotten that, and discussion is yours.
If I'm correct, I think there were three the first time we asked, on the first update, and now there are six. I already closed, I'm sorry, I closed it up, and now it's sitting at ninety-two percent and just...
There's eight total.
There's eight total.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering if that's, if the mayor thought that that was, I mean, any news is good news, but should it have been, should it have been eight, twenty-eight, or twenty-eight-hundred by now? I don't know.
I don't have an update on that, unfortunately. That is something that I've not, got a whole bunch. You've got, you've got it, Jim?
Yeah, I've got, now I've got to scroll down to it.
We'll try to get it, I'll try to, we have a meeting tomorrow at...
So the question is, is it working?
At night?
Or, and I think what we had said originally was, is if there's anything we can do to better market it, if there's anything we can do to...
So the goal is to continually have this happen and expand the list to a certain...
Right, and then if you look at geographic wise, and now I can't, now it's just all blank.
It's a, it's a, yeah, it's the last page.
Just geographic wise, still one of, three of them, three of the eight are in, on Beagle Park Drive. One is in, two are in Sassafras Meadows. And I'm not sure where Twin, I know where Tarrytown is, but I'm not sure where Twin Creek Drive is.
Twin Creeks? Let's see. I think it's off Beagle.
Beagle Park.
In the same...
Is that in the, by Sumac?
I'm thinking I'd let...
Creek or Creeks, Councilman. Thank you.
It's Twin Creeks, though.
Creeks. There it is. It's on... Park, it's off of Beagle Park.
Yeah, it's off Beagle Park.
So is it in the same development as Still Meadow?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yep, it's off of Still Meadow.
So one, two, three, so five of the eight are in the same community? And it was the gentleman who came to love me this that evening?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, that's all, I just didn't know whether or not we thought when we did it, it was something that was going to be larger, smaller, or so. This is fine, thank you.
I don't know how many spots he had available in that area either.
There's still several, several empty lots I drove through there just today, and it made me, I, it brought to my mind the question, why are we limiting, limiting this to single-family homes? Because just across, there are six townhomes in a complex that started to go up that is stalled. And then there's also Parsons behind the mall, where you have six cul-de-sacs, and only two and a half of them are developed. So, you know, it could be a marketing issue in getting the people to come in and do it, but why aren't we including these homes? And if we want to move people into homeownership, it seems that we should want as diverse type of homes as possible, because townhomes are more affordable.
Was it, I guess townhomes aren't considered. I'm not sure if they would be or not, under what we did, when we did the moratorium.
No.
Is that part of the ordinance?
I was trying to remember the ordinance, did we...
Were we specific?
Single-family detached dwellings.
Okay.
So detached is specifically mentioned?
Yes. Well, I mean, we can look at it and see.
Go back, yeah.
I will tell you that they're, on the planning commission, there's, activity is picking up.
Is it picking up?
Yes. Yeah. Which is a good thing, and the other thing is, I don't know, in our, in my development, they're not even going on the market. It's, they have a list that, when it, when it's gone, within a day, it's sold. My daughter sold her house in a day. One day. On Taney.
Well, I guess we could go back and see if we can put in...
Yeah, and, I mean, and at that point, did we discuss extending it to? I don't know.
Yeah, we do a year.
Yeah, we did.
We did a year, and if we're going to add a different type of housing into it...
You have to give it time to...
It would really be great if we could get the people who are doing the par, the villages at Parsons Lake to come in and tell us what they need, because I basically go out there and hammer the nails in if they just took down the damn mound that has a tree that looks like it's, it could, you could roll out those things, and it'd be six hundred years old. I mean, really, if there's any way, if you want to ask the mayor if there's any way that we could find out what it is that we could do to...
Yep.
And I, and I think for any of them that are in that situation, if there's a couple other spots, then maybe we can have some discussions and, you know...
I don't know what the build-out is left in Sassafras.
I think there's, there's...
Probably still left.
There's room out there.
There's quite a few.
It's quite a few.
Can I ask a question? Just because we were talking about owner-occupied stuff, difference between townhomes and condos, when you put up an entire condominium complex, thirty or forty units, and you add that math versus a single family, it starts to get, starts to compound itself pretty quickly, rather than a couple of townhomes.